Impossible! Mrs. Bennett slammed Elise Ferguson's test paper onto the desk. No one, especially not The unfinished sentence hung in the air like a verdict. The classroom fell silent, twenty-four students holding their breath as the red one hundred percent glared from the page. Perfect scores were statistical anomalies. Perfect scores from the only black girl in advanced placement? According to Mrs. Bennett's thinning smile, that was something far worse.
I studied, Elise said, the words barely audible as the icy air conditioning blasted down, numbing her fingers still clutching the paper. Her other hand instinctively touched the worn chess knight in her pocket, her grandfather's lucky piece. She'd need more than luck now.
Officer Reynolds? Mrs. Bennett called without breaking eye contact with Elise. Please escort Ms. Ferguson to Principal Davis. We have a cheater. The security guard's shoes squeaked against linoleum as he approached. In that moment, Elise felt her future collapsing. Her mother's sacrifices, her grandfather's legacy, her own dreams, all threatened because she dared to be exceptional. Friday, public verification test, the auditorium. Principal Davis's words would echo in her mind hours later. Either prove your innocence or face expulsion. As she was led away, Elise caught Mrs. Bennett logging into the Brookfield Foundation grant portal on her computer. The teacher's smirk spoke volumes. This wasn't just about one test. It was about maintaining a system, protecting funding that depended on certain students succeeding and others failing. Three days to prepare for a test designed to make her fail, with twelve years of systemic underestimation crushing down on her shoulders. How does a child fight an entire system determined to see her as nothing but a fraud? Perhaps the answer lay in the chess strategies her grandfather had taught her. Sometimes the most powerful move transforms the entire board. Elise's walk to school each morning was a journey of invisible boundaries. The crossing guard greeted the white students by name but only nodded at her. Teacher's eyes skipped over her raised hand in class discussions as if she were made of glass. When she scored highest on quizzes, her papers were returned with skeptical glances and whispered consultations between staff. Can I borrow your notes for section four? Amber Wilson would ask, all smiles in the hallway. Yet when study groups formed at lunch tables, Elise's name was never mentioned. She'd watch them from her solitary corner pretending she didn't care. Her mother, Tanya Ferguson, left for her hospital nursing shift at five thirty each morning, her scrubs already wrinkled from exhaustion before her day even began.
You're twice as smart as any of them, she'd whisper, kissing Elise's forehead before dawn. Just like your grandfather was. They just aren't ready to see it yet.
The familiar wood smell of her grandfather's chessboard, slightly musty with age but comforting like an old friend, greeted Elise every afternoon when she returned to their empty apartment. Dr. William Ferguson had been one of the few black professors at the state university's mathematics department before his death three years ago. The chessboard was one of the few possessions he'd left behind that hadn't been sold to cover medical bills. Chess is life distilled to its purest form, he'd told her, placing the carved knight in her tiny four-year-old palm. Sixty-four squares of pure meritocracy. The pieces don't care what color your skin is, only how well you think. While her mother worked double shifts to keep their apartment, Elise played chess online, creating an anonymous profile to challenge college students and amateur masters. She'd named herself Queen Undercover, choosing a username that revealed nothing about her age or background. Another one bites the dust, she chuckled to herself as a username GrandmasterFlash53 abruptly disconnected after she forced a checkmate in seventeen moves. She imagined some college senior throwing his hands up in disbelief, never suspecting he'd just been outplayed by an eleven-year-old black girl from the east side of town. The thought made her laugh even as loneliness settled back around her shoulders. In chess, as in life, they underestimate you at their own peril, her grandfather's voice whispered in her memory. Elise ran her fingers over the worn knight piece she kept in her pocket, its once-sharp edges softened by years of handling. Her grandfather had carried it through doctoral defenses and faculty meetings, a talisman against doubt. Now it was hers, a secret weapon against a world determined to put limits on her potential. At school, Elise kept her head down. She learned early that outshining others brought scrutiny, not celebration. She deliberately missed questions occasionally, careful to maintain high but not exceptional grades. The district aptitude test had been different, anonymous, with only student numbers on the forms. For once, she'd answered every question exactly as she knew how, without fear of standing out. The test had been administered to all sixth graders across the district, designed to identify candidates for advanced programs and specialized educational tracks. Elise had felt a rare freedom while taking it, answering complex logic problems and mathematical puzzles without worrying about how her performance would be perceived. She'd walked out of the testing room feeling confident, but never expecting a perfect score. The statistical anomaly Mrs. Bennett now found so impossible to believe. That freedom had cost her. Now she faced Mrs. Bennett's wrath and the principal's suspicion. She knew what they saw when they looked at her, not a gifted child, but a threat to their comfortable assumptions about which students could excel and which ones couldn't possibly have the intellectual capacity to achieve perfection without cheating. The injustice burned in her chest like a physical pain. All her life she'd been careful to navigate the invisible rules, the unspoken boundaries of how much success was appropriate for someone who looked like her. One moment of academic honesty had shattered that careful balance. Little did Mrs. Bennett know that in accusing Elise of cheating, she hadn't picked a fight with just any student. She'd challenged the youngest chess prodigy the state had never bothered to discover. Excellent work, Jason, Mrs. Bennett smiled broadly as she handed back the weekly geometry quiz. Ninety-two percent shows real improvement. She moved through the rows with theatrical praise, her voice rising with each return. Wonderful effort, Mackenzie. Eighty-eight percent. You're really grasping these concepts. The squeak of security guard Officer Reynolds's shoes on linoleum preceded him into the classroom. He stood awkwardly by the door, summoned by a text from Mrs. Bennett before class began. Every student noticed, eyes darting between him and their teacher, wondering who was in trouble. Mrs. Bennett's path through the desks was deliberate, building tension as she approached Elise's corner. She'd saved Elise for last, clutching her paper separately from the others. And then we have Ms. Ferguson. Mrs. Bennett's voice dropped to a theatrical hush as she stopped beside Elise's desk. She didn't place the paper down. Instead, she held it aloft like evidence at a trial. A perfect score. Again. The room went silent. Elise kept her eyes forward, her face carefully neutral despite the heat rising in her cheeks. Would you care to explain, Ms. Ferguson, how you, and only you, managed to correctly answer every single question? Including the bonus problem that wasn't even covered in our textbook?
I read ahead, Elise said quietly. Chapter twelve discusses advanced applications of
No! Mrs. Bennett slapped the quiz onto Elise's desk. What you did was cheat. There is simply no other explanation.
Elise's chest tightened. I didn't cheat.
Statistically impossible, Mrs. Bennett continued as if Elise hadn't spoken. No student in my twenty-two years of teaching has ever achieved perfect scores consistently without outside help. I want you to admit what you did. The classroom had become unbearably quiet. Elise could feel twenty-four pairs of eyes burning into her, some curious, some gleeful at her predicament, none supportive.
I didn't cheat, Elise repeated, her voice stronger. I studied. I understood the material.
Mrs. Bennett's face hardened. Officer Reynolds, please escort Ms. Ferguson to Principal Davis's office. Now! The security guard stepped forward, his utility belt jingling in the silence. Come on, kid. Let's go.
Elise gathered her belongings with shaking hands, aware of the whispers already starting behind her.
I knew she couldn't be that smart. Always thought something was off about her. Finally got caught. The walk to the principal's office felt endless. Each step echoed in the empty hallway, a percussive reminder of her public shaming. Other students peered through classroom doorways as she passed, word of her disgrace already spreading through the school's efficient rumor mill. By lunch, everyone would know that Elise Ferguson had been caught cheating. Whether it was true or not, didn't matter. Principal Davis was waiting, his office door open, Mrs. Bennett's email already displayed on his monitor. He didn't offer Elise a seat. Your teacher has serious concerns about academic dishonesty, he began without preamble. This isn't the first time she's noted statistically improbable performance from you.
I didn't cheat, Elise said for the third time, the words beginning to sound hollow even to her own ears. Would anyone ever believe her?
The evidence suggests otherwise. Principal Davis tented his fingers. However, we believe in due process at Westlake. We're willing to give you a chance to prove yourself. The principal's "chance" was a public verification test, to be administered Friday afternoon in the school auditorium, with teachers and administrators present. Pass, and the cheating accusations would be withdrawn. Fail, and she faced expulsion. We've already notified your mother, Principal Davis concluded. You're suspended until the test. Officer Reynolds will escort you off campus. As security led her away, Elise caught the smirk on Mrs. Bennett's face, the look of someone who believed they'd already won. Elise decided right then that the smirk wouldn't last beyond Friday. Tanya Ferguson's hospital scrubs were wrinkled from her twelve-hour shift, dark circles prominent under her eyes as she sat across from Principal Davis the next morning. Despite her exhaustion, her spine remained straight, her voice steady. My daughter doesn't cheat. She's never needed to. Principal Davis smiled thinly. Every parent believes in their child's honesty, Mrs. Ferguson. We're simply following protocol for academic integrity violations. Where was this protocol when Jason Miller plagiarized his entire history report last semester and received a talking to? Or when Amber Wilson was caught with test answers and got detention? Tanya's voice never rose, but her words landed with precision. My daughter scores too high and your immediate response is public humiliation and possible expulsion? The situations are not comparable, Principal Davis replied stiffly. The statistical anomalies in your daughter's case suggest the statistical anomaly is that you've never had a black student in your gifted and talented program, despite district demographics. Tanya slid a folder across the desk. I've done my research, Principal Davis. Fifteen percent of this district is black, yet zero percent of your advanced programs reflect that. I'm requesting Elise's complete academic file and all documentation of your decision-making process. Principal Davis's smile vanished. We'll provide what's legally required. The verification test stands, Friday, two P M. At home, Elise didn't waste energy on tears. While her mother fought the administrative battle, she developed her own strategy. Her laptop glowed with dozens of open tabs, teacher reviews, school board minutes, news articles about Westlake Academy. Look at this, she said when her mother returned, pointing to a five-year-old news clipping. Mrs. Bennett accused two other students of cheating, both black, both transferred out afterward. Tanya squeezed her daughter's shoulder. Keep digging. The taste of sweet tart lemonade her mother made cut through Elise's anxiety as they worked into the evening. The bright citrus sharpened her focus as she outlined her battle plan. They want to test my knowledge, Elise said, but this isn't about what I know. It's about who they think should be allowed to know it. That night, after her mother finally collapsed into exhausted sleep, Elise logged into her chess forum. She'd never revealed her age or identity to the online community of players, but they respected her strategic mind. She created a new thread. Strategies for winning an unfair game. Urgent advice needed. Responses poured in, but one stood out. A user called KnightDefender wrote, Sometimes the best move isn't on the board but in changing how your opponent perceives the game. What's the real victory condition here? They exchanged messages deep into the night, with KnightDefender offering surprisingly insightful advice about her specific situation, despite her keeping details vague. Your opponent expects you to play defensively, he wrote. They've designed a game where proving your innocence seems impossible. So don't play that game. Create a new one where their moves expose their true intentions.
How do you know so much about this? Elise finally asked.
Let's just say I've fought similar battles, came the reply. And I recognize your playing style from somewhere. Very distinctive approach to the Sicilian defense in our match last month. Reminds me of an old professor who taught me years ago.
Elise's heart skipped. Could this person have known her grandfather? She was weighing how much to reveal when her mother knocked on her door. It's two A M., baby. You need sleep. Just one more minute, Elise promised, quickly typing. Can you help me prepare for a comprehensive knowledge test? It's in two days.
Send me the subjects, KnightDefender replied. I'll help however I can. The next morning, Elise created flashcards for her verification test, putting snarky comments on the back of each one. Question they think will stump me number twenty-seven, she wrote on a calculus problem far beyond middle school level. Mrs. Bennett's shocked face when I solve this. Priceless. The humor helped mask her fear. What if they created questions no one could answer? What if they designed the test specifically to make her fail? By Wednesday afternoon, KnightDefender had sent practice questions covering everything from advanced mathematics to obscure literary analysis. They'll try to trip you up with college-level material, he warned. Be prepared for anything.
Why are you helping me so much, Elise asked?
There was a long pause before his response. Because twenty years ago, I was you. And no one was there to help me. On Thursday, a package arrived at their apartment, express delivered from the university bookstore across town. Inside was a leather-bound book. Strategic Thinking in Chess and Life by Dr. William Ferguson. The note inside read, Your grandfather wrote this. I was his student. The world wasn't ready for his brilliance either. Page two seventeen might be particularly useful for tomorrow. Dr. Elijah Carter, Knight Defender. Elise's hands trembled as she opened to the marked page. There, in her grandfather's words, was a discussion of how prejudice blinds opponents to obvious strengths, creating exploitable weaknesses. And in the chapter's illustration section, chess problems he'd created to teach strategic thinking. As night fell, Elise sat cross-legged on her bed, surrounded by notes and practice problems. Her mother brought her dinner on a tray, worry etched into every line of her face.
You shouldn't have to fight this hard just to be believed, Tanya said softly. Grandpa always said that sometimes the hardest battles are the most important ones, Elise replied, carefully memorizing another set of formulas. He would be so proud of you, her mother whispered, gently touching the worn chess knight Elise had placed beside her notes for inspiration. Elise looked up, a quiet determination in her eyes. Tomorrow isn't just about me. It's about every kid who's been told they couldn't possibly be as smart as they actually are.
The verification test would cover five subjects, each designed to expose a cheater. But what they didn't know was that Elise wasn't preparing to pass their test. She was preparing to change the game entirely. Thursday afternoon, Elise returned to school to collect the verification test guidelines, a formality that required her signature. The administration building was mostly empty as classes were in session. As she approached Principal Davis's office, she heard raised voices from within. Deliberately impossible. Mrs. Bennett's distinctive tone carried through the not-quite-closed door. I've included three questions from undergraduate courses. Isn't that excessive? Principal Davis sounded concerned but not opposed. We need plausible deniability if her mother involves the district. That's why most questions are merely advanced, not impossible, Mrs. Bennett explained. But we need a few guaranteed failures to prove she couldn't possibly have legitimately scored perfectly on her previous work. Elise froze, her hand halfway to the door. What about the grant, Principal Davis asked? If she somehow passes She won't, Mrs. Bennett insisted. But even if she manages some sections, the math portion alone will expose her. No eleven-year-old can solve differential equations. The Brookfield Foundation has been clear about what demographics they want to see improving in their grant requirements, Principal Davis continued. Our current numbers show exactly the right groups excelling. A statistical anomaly like Ferguson threatens that narrative. Which is precisely why we need to resolve this quickly, Mrs. Bennett replied. The verification test will put her in her place, and we'll be back on track for the two million in funding. The harsh glare of the hallway fluorescents suddenly seemed brighter, burning Elise's eyes as the truth crystallized. This wasn't just about one teacher's prejudice. It was institutional. A system designed to funnel resources towards certain students while keeping others like her firmly on a lower track. She backed away silently, then made a show of walking loudly toward the office and knocking on the now-closed door. Principal Davis welcomed her with a practiced smile. Ms. Ferguson, right on time. Elise signed the verification guidelines with a steady hand, her mind racing ahead like a chess player seeing twenty moves into the future. The rules they'd created were full of pitfalls: time constraints, banned reference materials, subjective evaluation criteria. But buried within them was a critical weakness. Student may request clarification or alternate demonstration method for any question. Her walk home was a blur, her thoughts consumed with what she'd overheard. The school wasn't just trying to prove she'd cheated. They were actively working to ensure she failed their so-called "fair" assessment. The realization should have crushed her spirit but instead, a strange calm settled over her. The clarity of knowing exactly what she was facing, not just suspicion, but deliberate sabotage, somehow made the challenge more straightforward. That evening, a certified letter arrived for Tanya Ferguson. Elise watched her mother's face harden as she read the school district's response to her transfer request.
Denied, Tanya said flatly. And they've flagged your record. Even if we appeal successfully, every school in the district will see this cheating accusation. They're going to share the verification results with all district schools, Elise realized. They want to make sure I can't escape this even if we move. Her mother's hands shook with suppressed rage. We should never have moved to this district. I thought better schools meant better opportunities, but they're just more sophisticated in how they shut doors in our faces. Elise reached for her laptop. I need to talk to Dr. Carter.
KnightDefender was online, waiting. Elise described what she'd overheard including the grant motivation. It's time I told you everything, Dr. Carter wrote. I was your grandfather's doctoral student twenty years ago. When he died, I promised to keep an eye out for you, but I had no idea which school you attended until I recognized your chess strategies online.
Why didn't you tell me sooner, Elise typed?
Would you have trusted a stranger who claimed to know your family? I needed to earn your trust first, he responded. What you overheard confirms what I suspected. Westlake Academy has been systematically tracking minority students away from advanced opportunities for years. The data shows not a single black student has been admitted to their gifted and talented program in nine years, despite dozens qualifying on standardized metrics.
Why, Elise asked?
Grants, awards, prestige, college placements, all tied to maintaining a specific narrative about which students naturally excel. Your perfect score threatens that narrative.
So what do I do? Elise's cursor blinked in the message box, her future hanging in the balance.
Beat them at their own game, Dr. Carter wrote. I've contacted some colleagues who might be interested in attending tomorrow's verification test. Educational equity researchers, district oversight personnel, perhaps a journalist or two who owe me favors. Would that be all right with you?
Elise's heart raced. Yes.
Study page two seventeen again, he instructed. Your grandfather wasn't just teaching chess with those problems. He was teaching life strategy. Elise spent the rest of the night memorizing every word, every diagram, every subtle lesson her grandfather had embedded in his work. Outside her window, the city lights blurred as exhaustion set in, but she refused to stop until she understood exactly what approach would transform tomorrow from a trial into an opportunity. The harsh glare of her computer screen at two A M. illuminated Elise's determined face. Eyes burning but mind racing with possibilities as she committed every word of her grandfather's book to memory. Tomorrow wasn't just about proving she didn't cheat on one test. It was about exposing a system designed to ensure students like her never got the chance to succeed in the first place. The school auditorium buzzed with unexpected activity. What Principal Davis had envisioned as a quiet administrative procedure had somehow transformed into a public event. Teachers whispered among themselves, students peered curiously through the doors and, most alarmingly, a cluster of unfamiliar adults in formal attire occupied the back row, notebooks and tablets at the ready. Who are these people? Mrs. Bennett hissed to Principal Davis as they arranged the test materials on a long table. Some kind of district observers, he muttered back. Legal says we can't exclude them as it's an official academic proceeding. Elise entered alongside her mother, both wearing expressions of calm determination despite the circus atmosphere. Doctor Elijah Carter followed several paces behind, introducing himself simply as an academic colleague of the family when questioned by administration. Principal Davis cleared his throat. We're here to administer a verification assessment for Elise Ferguson, following concerns about academic integrity. This is a standard procedure to ensure Will the test questions be great appropriate, interrupted a sharp-voiced woman from the back row. I'm Dr. Yamamoto, educational assessment specialist from the district office. Principal Davis faltered. The assessment reflects the advanced material covered in I'd like to review the test parameters before we proceed, Dr. Yamamoto continued, approaching the table with unmistakable authority. Especially given the unusual nature of this verification process. While the administration frantically consulted with the unexpected district representative, Elise caught Dr. Carter's subtle nod. His presence steadied her as she took her seat at the isolated desk in the center of the room. Mrs. Bennett circled like a predator, distributing test materials with a confidence that hadn't diminished despite the complications. You have two hours to complete all five sections, she announced, beginning with language arts. The test began with questions clearly beyond standard middle school curriculum. Literary analysis of Dostoevsky, linguistics principles not taught until university. Yet Elise worked steadily through each one, her expression betraying nothing. You need to move faster, Mrs. Bennett urged twenty minutes in, leaning close to Elise's desk. Lots more to cover. The guidelines specify two hours total, Elise replied calmly, loud enough for others to hear. I'm entitled to use my time as needed for each section. Unless you're changing the rules now? Her eyes flicked meaningfully toward the observers in the back. Mrs. Bennett retreated, visibly unsettled by Elise's composure and the scrutiny of the unexpected audience. The science section followed, then history, each filled with graduate-level questions hidden among more reasonable ones. Elise recognized the trap. The impossible questions were positioned to frustrate and demoralize her before the crucial mathematics section. Beads of sweat trickled down Mrs. Bennett's temple as she watched Elise work confidently through problems designed to be impossible. The teacher's certainty wavered with each completed page, her composure cracking as Elise showed no signs of the expected struggle. In the back of the room, Dr. Carter worked quietly on his tablet, occasionally showing documents to Elise's mother and the district representatives. Their expressions grew increasingly serious as they reviewed whatever he presented. Elise deliberately used Mrs. Bennett's favorite red pen to solve the problems, having borrowed it from her desk on the way in. The small act of defiance went unnoticed by everyone except Mrs. Bennett herself, whose eyes narrowed at the sight of her distinctive pen gliding across Elise's paper. As the test progressed, whispers rippled through the growing audience. Word had spread throughout the school, drawing curious teachers and administrators on their planning periods. Each newcomer was quietly briefed by colleagues, their expressions shifting from curiosity to concern as they observed the clearly advanced material being presented to an eleven-year-old. One particularly challenging physics question involving concepts Elise recognized from her grandfather's university-level textbooks almost made her smile. Dr. Carter had prepared her for exactly this type of question the night before, anticipating the specific areas where Mrs. Bennett might try to trip her up. Forty-five minutes remaining, Principal Davis announced, his voice betraying a hint of nervousness as Elise continued to work methodically through material that would challenge college freshmen. Tanya Ferguson sat rigidly in the front row, her eyes never leaving her daughter. The night before, she had wanted to call off the whole verification, to find another school, another district, somewhere Elise wouldn't have to prove herself so brutally. But Elise had been adamant. Running away just means they'll do this to someone else, someone who might not have what I have. Final section, Mrs. Bennett announced after ninety minutes, her voice strained as she placed the mathematics portion on Elise's desk. Advanced mathematical concepts. This section began with calculus and ended with theoretical mathematics that would challenge undergraduate majors. Elise worked through each problem methodically, showing every step of her process in meticulous detail. With five minutes remaining and the final question before her, a college-level chess problem no middle-schooler should be able to solve. Elise reached into her pocket and felt her grandfather's worn knight chess piece, knowing exactly what move would checkmate not just the problem, but Mrs. Bennett's entire game. Time, Mrs. Bennett announced, satisfaction creeping back into her voice as she surveyed the packed auditorium. Before we grade Miss Ferguson's work, I've prepared a special challenge, a final verification that cannot be prepared for in advance. Principal Davis nodded, gesturing toward the digital projector. The screen illuminated with a complex chess position, pieces scattered in what appeared to be random disarray to the untrained eye. This is an advanced chess problem from collegiate competition, Mrs. Bennett explained to the audience. No cheater who simply memorized answers could possibly solve it without extensive chess training and natural aptitude for complex strategic thinking. Elise studied the projected board, a smile spreading slowly across her face. The familiar position was no random challenge, it was one of her grandfather's own compositions, published in his book and famous among serious chess scholars for its elegant solution. The challenge, Mrs. Bennett continued, is to determine the winning sequence for white. You have five minutes. Instead of writing the answer, Elise raised her hand. I'd like to request an alternate demonstration method, she said, citing the exact clause from the verification guidelines. Principal Davis frowned. What did you have in mind? I'd prefer to demonstrate on an actual chessboard, Elise replied. It would better showcase my understanding of the solution. After a moment's hesitation and glances toward the observers, Principal Davis nodded dismissively. Fine, Mrs. Bennett, is there a chess set available? In my classroom cabinet, Mrs. Bennett replied tightly. I'll retrieve it. While they waited, Elise stood calmly beside her desk, the knight chess piece visible in her hand now. The whispers in the auditorium grew as tension built. Principal Davis checked his watch repeatedly, clearly hoping the delay might rattle Elise. Mrs. Bennett returned with a wooden chess set, setting it on a table wheeled to the center of the auditorium. With deliberate slowness, Elise arranged the pieces to match the projected position, each placement making a satisfying thud against the board in the suddenly silent room. The solution, Elise began, her voice clear and strong, requires thinking eight moves ahead with perfect counterplay from black. She moved the white knight forward. Knight to F five threatens the queen and creates a discovered check from the bishop. She continued methodically, moving both white and black pieces through the sequence, explaining each move's strategic purpose. Black must sacrifice the rook here to prevent immediate mate. White bishop captures, creating a double threat. The soft-felt bottom of the chess pieces against the board punctuated her explanation, making a satisfying thud with each perfectly placed move in the silent auditorium. The audience leaned forward, captivated by the eleven-year-old's confident execution of a solution that clearly required master-level understanding. As Elise approached the final move, she paused, looking directly at Mrs. Bennett. This position has a name in chess literature, it's called the professor's gambit. Do you know why? Mrs. Bennett's face had drained of all color. She said nothing. It was created by my grandfather, Dr. William Ferguson, Elise continued, her voice carrying to every corner of the now silent auditorium. This exact puzzle was published in his book on chess strategy, a book that sits on Dr. Carter's shelf at the university. She turned toward the stunned audience. But interestingly, it also sits in Mrs. Bennett's classroom cabinet. I saw it there last semester when I was helping organize the reference section. Murmurs rippled through the crowd as Elise continued. My grandfather's photograph hangs in the university's Hall of Distinguished Faculty, where Mrs. Bennett would have seen it during her education degree. The same last name, Ferguson, and the same chess problem, quite a coincidence. From his seat, Dr. Carter stood. I can confirm that this chess problem was indeed created by Dr. William Ferguson, who was my doctoral advisor and a distinguished professor of mathematics for twenty-five years at the state university. His contributions to both mathematics and chess theory are well documented. So, Elise said, turning back to Mrs. Bennett. Either you knowingly chose my grandfather's chess problem to test me, expecting I wouldn't recognize it, which seems unlikely given our shared last name, or you didn't research the problem's origin at all before presenting it as an impossible challenge for an eleven-year-old. She placed her grandfather's knight piece on the board, completing the checkmate pattern just as reporters' cameras began to flash. Either way, it suggests a certain carelessness in your verification methods. The silence that followed was absolute. Principal Davis stared open-mouthed between Elise, the chessboard, and Mrs. Bennett, whose complexion had gone from pale to ashen. Several of the district representatives were frantically taking notes, while others exchanged meaningful glances. I believe, Dr. Carter said into the silence, this demonstration conclusively answers any questions about Miss Ferguson's academic capabilities. But perhaps more importantly, it raises serious concerns about the verification process itself. As Mrs. Bennett's face drained of color, Elise calmly placed her grandfather's knight piece on the board, completing the checkmate pattern just as the reporters' cameras began to flash. I believe, Dr. Carter said, stepping forward into the tense silence. Introductions are in order. I'm Dr. Elijah Carter, professor of educational policy at the state university. I was both Dr. William Ferguson's doctoral student and Elise's anonymous chess mentor online. The distinct smell of Principal Davis's expensive cologne grew stronger as he approached, his usual intimidating presence now diminished as he bent down to Elise's level. Miss Ferguson, there seems to have been a misunderstanding. No misunderstanding, interrupted one of the observers, rising from her seat. I'm Regina Waters, district educational equity officer. We've been monitoring statistical anomalies in advanced program placements across the district for some time. Dr. Carter nodded. When Elise reached out online for help with an unfair academic challenge, I recognized her chess strategy as remarkably similar to her grandfather's techniques. Once I confirmed her identity, I contacted colleagues who have been investigating disparities in educational opportunities. He gestured to his tablet, now connected to the projector. The screen filled with a data visualization showing nine years of advanced placement statistics for Westlake Academy, broken down by demographics. Over the past nine years, Dr. Carter explained, forty-seven minority students at Westlake scored within qualifying range for gifted and talented programs based on standardized district assessments. Zero were admitted to the program. Mrs. Bennett stepped forward. Those decisions were based on multiple factors, not just test scores, teacher recommendations, classroom performance. Subjective criteria, Dr. Carter interrupted. That research consistently shows are influenced by implicit bias. The data reveals that white students with identical or lower scores were admitted at a rate of ninety-four percent. This isn't just about one student, added Ms. Waters. It's a pattern that extends across specific schools in our district, correlating directly with which schools receive prestigious grants like the Brookfield Foundation funding, grants that reward specific demographic success stories, while incentivizing the suppression of others. Principal Davis's face had gone ashen. We follow district guidelines for all placements. While creating impossible barriers for students who don't fit your preferred narrative, Elise's mother interjected, standing beside her daughter. My child has been systematically denied opportunities despite demonstrating exceptional abilities. Today's verification test was designed to be impossible, as we all heard Mrs. Bennett admit. A slender woman in the back raised her hand. Clarissa Johnson, education reporter, Metro News. Are you saying Westlake deliberately excludes qualified minority students to maintain preferential grant funding? Before Principal Davis could respond, Doctor Carter displayed another slide. An email excerpt between administration officials discussing the statistical requirements for maintaining the Brookfield Grant status. The district oversight committee will be conducting a full investigation, Ms. Waters announced. Starting with a review of all advanced placement decisions over the past decade and a comprehensive audit of how the verification test administered today deviated from grade-appropriate content. Mrs. Bennett attempted one final defense. The verification was designed to thoroughly test knowledge across. It included differential equations, Dr. Carter cut in. I teach those to junior-level mathematics majors at the university. There is no defensible reason to include university-level content in a middle school assessment unless the intention was to ensure failure. The crowd's murmurs grew louder. Several teachers looked distinctly uncomfortable, exchanging glances that suggested this wasn't the first time they'd witnessed such tactics. A few nodded subtly in agreement with Dr. Carter's assessment. Elise stood quietly beside the chessboard, her grandfather's knight piece still in her hand. Despite the vindication unfolding around her, she felt no triumph, only a profound sadness for all the students who hadn't had a Dr. Carter in their corner, who hadn't had a mother willing to fight the system, who had internalized the message that their academic struggles were due to personal deficiencies rather than systematic barriers. Principal Davis, seeing the inevitable, turned to Elise and her mother. On behalf of Westlake Academy, I offer my sincere apologies for this unfortunate situation. We will, of course, immediately place Elise in our gifted and talented program and ensure all her academic achievements are properly recognized going forward. The offer hung in the air, a hasty bandage over a systemic wound. Elise looked at her mother, then at Dr. Carter, drawing strength from their presence. That's not enough, she said, her voice steady despite her racing heart. This isn't just about me. What about the other students who've been pushed out or held back? What about the next black student who scores too high on a test, Ms. Waters nodded approvingly. The young lady makes an excellent point. Individual accommodations don't address institutional failures. Tanya Ferguson stepped forward, placing a protective hand on her daughter's shoulder. We don't want special treatment for Elise. We want systemic change that ensures every student has a fair opportunity, regardless of race or background. What exactly are you proposing, Principal Davis asked, his tone defensive but cautious. But Elise, standing tall beside her exhausted mother who had fought this system her entire life, had a different proposal in mind. One that would change not just her future, but the future of every underestimated student in the district. Three months later, the wooden podium in Westlake Academy's auditorium bore a new plaque. Educational Equity Initiative, Established 2025. Elise stood behind it, addressing an audience far different from the one that had witnessed her chess triumph. The blind evaluation system is simple, she explained, gesturing to the presentation slides Dr. Carter had helped her prepare. All student work is submitted without names or identifying information. Only after assessment are identities revealed for recording purposes. The warmth of sunlight streamed through the classroom windows as Elise's chess club met after her presentation, illuminating the diverse faces of children discovering their potential. What had begun as a single-student stand against injustice had catalyzed district-wide reform. Mrs. Bennett had been reassigned to administrative curriculum development, a position carefully structured to utilize her knowledge while keeping her away from direct student evaluation. Principal Davis, after several tense board meetings, remained in his position but underwent mandatory bias training twice weekly with Dr. Carter, supervising his progress. The most important change, Elise told a visiting district official as they observed the chess club, isn't just the blind evaluation, it's that students now have multiple pathways to demonstrate aptitude. Traditional testing is just one option. The investigation triggered by Elise's verification test had revealed patterns of discrimination extending far beyond Westlake Academy. Three other schools in the district had shown similar disparities in advanced program placements, leading to a comprehensive overhaul of the entire gifted education identification process. The chess club had become Elise's pride, open to all students regardless of experience or background. Dr. Carter volunteered as faculty advisor, bringing university resources and occasional guest lecturers who expanded the children's horizons beyond what Westlake had traditionally offered. Your move? Elise encouraged a hesitant six-year-old girl facing her first chess challenge. Remember what we practiced. The young girl, Deja Williams from the east side of town, just like Elise, carefully moved her pawn forward, her face a mixture of concentration and worry. Perfect, Elise praised. You're thinking ahead, seeing the consequences of each move. That's what makes a great chess player and a great student. Deja beamed, her confidence visibly growing with the encouragement. Across the room, a dozen other students of various backgrounds worked through chess problems together, collaborating rather than competing, learning that their different perspectives strengthened their collective understanding. In the administrative office across campus, Tanya Ferguson reviewed course materials for her newly-established nursing education program. The district settlement had included a full scholarship for her to complete her long-deferred master's degree, with a flexible schedule that allowed her to be home when Elise returned from school. The Ferguson Educational Justice Scholarship, named in honor of Dr. William Ferguson, would provide similar opportunities for parents of other students identified through the new evaluation system, recognizing that educational equity extended to families, not just individual students. The Metropolitan News had published a six-part investigative series on educational tracking disparities prompted by Elise's case but expanding to schools across the state. Three other districts had already implemented similar blind evaluation programs, with early results showing dramatic diversification of advanced programs without any reduction in academic standards. Mrs. Bennett's replacement, a young teacher named Ms. Rodriguez, frequently consulted with Elise about making advanced mathematics more accessible to students from all backgrounds. You've taught us as much as we've taught you, she admitted during one such conversation. Sometimes more. The Brookfield Foundation, facing public scrutiny over its grant criteria, had revised its requirements to reward schools for equitable access rather than demographic-specific outcomes. Their representatives had even invited Elise to speak at their annual education conference, acknowledging that true excellence came from nurturing all talented students, not just those who fit predetermined molds. They may underestimate you at first, Elise told her chess students, echoing her grandfather's words as she passed his knight piece around the circle, letting each child hold it for a moment. But your mind is your most powerful piece on the board. The piece eventually returned to her palm, worn smoother now from dozens of new hands, its history enriched rather than diminished by being shared. In her pocket, Elise carried a new chess piece, a queen that Dr. Carter had given her on the day Westlake Academy's first truly diverse gifted and talented cohort began classes. Your grandfather would be proud, he'd told her. Not just of what you've accomplished, but of how many doors you've opened for others. Watching her students discover their own potential, Elise understood that the true victory wasn't proving Mrs. Bennett wrong or even securing her own academic future. The real triumph was in changing a system that had been designed to exclude, transforming it into one that could recognize brilliance wherever it appeared. In chess, as in life, the most powerful move was often the one that transformed the entire board. Elise Ferguson had done just that, turning an accusation of cheating into a catalyst for change that would benefit generations of students to come. True intelligence isn't just about solving problems, it's about changing systems designed to hold you back. One child's courage to demand recognition can transform institutions and create pathways for generations of underestimated minds to follow. Has someone ever underestimated your abilities? Share your story of proving them wrong in the comments below. Want more inspiring stories of triumph against the odds? Subscribe to Beat Stories for weekly tales that will move your heart and ignite your spirit. Click that subscribe button now to never miss a story that could change how you see the world.
This isn't the end of the story, it's the beginning of what happens when truth meets visibility. This isn't the end of the story, it's the beginning of what happens when truth meets visibility. At Beat Stories, we believe exposure is the first step to transformation. Subscribe and stay tuned, because the next story might be yours.